Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, Richland School District Board of Trustees Regular Board Meeting. We certainly want to thank you for being here and welcome you back in two thousand and fifteen from the holidays and certainly hope that everyone had a very successful holidays. We've just come from Executive Session and we thank you for your patience as always as we deliberated those matters before the Board. At this time, we'll stand and have an inspirational moment by yours truly and pledge allegiance. This is a salute to teachers. Teachers who have passion for what they do and who want their students to succeed and be the best are the ones who are remembered for a lifetime. Teachers who truly care make this life a little better for some child each day. You can probably think of multiple instances where a good teacher changed the day for you and made you look on the brighter side. That's why the profession of teaching is a calling and not just a job. These teachers know you well and they give you wise advice because they care. Every child needs a teacher who cares about them and believes in them, one who's not afraid to be touched by the cares of their kids. So today, we salute teachers everywhere who proudly go the extra mile for the sake of those who need someone to believe in them. God bless teachers everywhere who are making a difference.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Man.
I'd like to make a motion that we move the first public session before the consent agenda.
This man has made a motion to amend the agenda by moving the public session prior to the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Plank. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that modification or amendment to the agenda? Do you want us to do a electronic? Motion passes seven zero. Now, at this time, we will approve the amended agenda. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda? Mr. Manning, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we are voting to approve the amended agenda. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a very special guest with us, and that's Councilman Jim Manning from Richland County Council who has come and wants an opportunity to share some thoughts with the Board, and at this time, we will welcome Mr. Manning to the podium. Welcome, Mr. Manning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and distinguished members of the Board of Commissioners. Just like a minute of time this evening, I wanted to be here in support of the Westwood High School group that will be making a presentation to you a little bit later. I was invited along with my colleagues from County Council to attend a wonderful assembly that they had, and it ignited a spark and a fire that is really incredible, and I'm just so appreciative for the work that they've been doing this year and their service learning around human trafficking. Very quickly, as a result of that assembly and a wonderful program there, Richland County Council unanimously has done a resolution recognizing January as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. It's recognized nationally. The President has done such a proclamation as a result of the work at Westwood. In addition to that resolution, County Council, myself, along with Councilwoman Julianne Dixon, has created a Human Trafficking Coalition in Richland County, which will officially be recognized tomorrow, along with the presentation of the resolution to a nonprofit here in our community, as well as to Ms. Plotner, the teacher under the direction of Principal Schmidt. The Council wanted her and her students to be recipients of one of the resolutions from the County Council as a result of their work. In addition, one of the members of the Richland County Coalition worked with the Governor's Office, and Governor Nikki Haley has proclaimed the month of January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month. So that's been done at the county level and the state level, and this is all a result of the work that Ms. Plotner is doing with the students under the guidance, obviously, you, the Board, and Dr. Hamm and everybody else, and they have done something that is absolutely turned over a stone that is going to save and make a difference in young people's lives in our county for a long, long time. And I commend you for your work and the support and look forward to hearing Ms. Plotner's report to you folks tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
Point of personal privilege, y'all call him Councilman Manning. I call him Uncle Jim. And I appreciate you coming out tonight and the work that Westwood did to help really create that fire and what you are doing on County Council. Thank you.
Also want to thank you, Councilman Manning, for your tremendous support of Richland School District too, as always. You have been a staunch advocate for this district, and you have really stood tall in helping us to be able to do the things that we need to do for our students, so thank you very much for that. Any other questions, comments from Councilman Manning? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second by Mr. Manning.
Second.
Second by Ms. Brill. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Okay. Thank you very much, Jim. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the faculty focus. Dr. Hamm.
I'd like to have Nancy Gregory introduce our faculty focus for this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Jackson, School Board members, Dr. Hamm. Under Stacy Plotner's leadership, Westwood High School was chosen as one of three schools nationwide to launch a campaign known as Globalize Thirteen, a project of the nonprofit Frederick Douglass Family Initiatives. This organization provides resources to schools across the country to reflect on the meaning of the Thirteenth Amendment, which ended slavery in America, and to also inform about modern-day quests for human rights. As the lead teacher for this project, Mrs. Plotner will share her experiences about how she worked with other teachers to integrate the components of project-based learning, but more than that, how she engaged students and how this project has had an impact on the greater community. So with that, I'll introduce Stacy Plotner.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Hamm, I am delighted to be here tonight to tell you about the Globalize Thirteen Campaign, which is a history-based human trafficking prevention curriculum that's being used by Westwood High School teachers and students. Now, I've taught the narrative of Frederick Douglass every year since I started teaching in nineteen ninety-seven. Yes, that means I turned forty this year. I've worked on cross-curricular projects and CO-TALK classes. I've studied in career academies in four schools in two states, but those projects did not make the impact that Globalize Thirteen has made. What made this project such a success was the combination of several factors and a little bit of luck. The first component is that this study was rich in research that is relevant to the real world. What does it mean for research to be relevant? Take, for example, a former project my American Studies students completed almost ten years ago in Illinois. They made these what I thought were amazing magazines about the Civil War. They did research papers and they gave presentations, then they did an infomercial about what they learned about the Civil War. But this just didn't make the impact. This didn't do anything for their hearts or their souls. So these highly motivated students drudged through the work that I had assigned, and they produced, for the most part, high-quality work, and that was that. They got their grade and it was over. But what if these students weren't highly motivated? What would they have created? What would have been the carrot on the end of that stick? On the other hand, what if these highly motivated students had been given issues to investigate that had engaged them? Imagine what they could have created then. So what's really wrong with these magazines? I mean, I carried these with me across the country because they were something I was truly proud of, something my students had put hours of work into, but for what purpose? To collect dust on my bookshelf, apparently. These magazines displayed knowledge, but had I known then what I know now, I would have had the students make contemporary connections to the topics, and I would have somehow used an authentic public audience. The authentic audience afforded by Globalize Thirteen made a significant difference in the quality of work students produced and in their dedication to the task. It's one thing to have an audience of classmates, but to know that community members, politicians, school board members, CEOs of nonprofit organizations were going to use your work on their website? That was motivation. One example of this high-quality work that some students, one of my students produced was a PSA on child trafficking created by London Allen in my American Literature class. Her final project reveals just how powerful a project can be when it firmly engages hearts and minds and provides real-world relevance for learning. So if you could, please look at the screen as you can see London's video. This video is being shared internationally on American Women for International Understanding page, South Carolina Stop Human Trafficking Group page, and on the Frederick Douglass Family Initiative page, where on this site alone, her video has reached over sixty-six-hundred people. So how did I get my students to go from this to that? Over the last few years, I've heard of certain instances of slavery and pockets around the world, like the abduction of children forced into warfare by groups such as the LRA led by Joseph Kony. I'd read about the controversies surrounding the chocolate companies and their use of child labor in the cocoa fields, and even reports of Apple using forced labor in their factories. Instead of having my students research antebellum slavery, I thought, why not investigate modern-day slavery, what is known today as human trafficking? And that is exactly what we did. By studying modern-day slavery, historical slavery became tragically real. The experiences discussed in the slave narratives we had read could be seen on video and in pictures, relived in our own time. We learned that while slavery isn't legal anywhere, it happens everywhere, that there are an estimated twenty-nine million slaves in the world today, more than at any other time in history, and that fourteen thousand five hundred men, women, and children are trafficked into the U.S. every year. The relevance of this real-world issue is what sparked our interest and moted debated us to learn even more. Now, as you know, teenagers may at times be accused of being self-centered or egocentric, but you could have heard a pin drop in the conference room when we listened to stories of children abducted from their homes in the dead of the night and were forced into armed combat, often forced to kill their parents first. We learned of ordinary teenagers in the U.S. and, yes, in Blythewood, South Carolina, that had been lured away from their homes by sex traffickers and forced to commit unthinkable acts. Once my students saw these atrocities through their research, they couldn't unsee them. They brainstormed ways that they could use their skills and their resources to share this knowledge with others. So in my research, I stumbled upon the Frederick Douglass Family Initiative's website and contacted them for more information. Robert Benz, the co-founder and vice president, contacted me and offered to set up a Skype session with Ken Morris, a direct descendant of both Frederick Douglass and Booker T. Washington. Now, I've been teaching the autobiography of Frederick Douglass for eighteen years. I'm a history buff, and so you can imagine, I was in awe, I was nervous as all get out just to talk to a descendant of Frederick Douglass. And in our Skype session with Mr. Morris, he discussed the ways with which his great-great-great-grandfather, Frederick Douglass, used the resources available to him to promote the cause of abolitionism. Mr. Morris challenged my students to use their natural talents and abilities and their modern technological resources to become social advocates. They began to realize that they don't have to be descendants of famous historical figures to be the voice of those that have none. And so we transformed from students studying slavery to modern-day abolitionists. My students decided they didn't just want to write about slavery, they didn't just want to give a presentation. They wanted to create a campaign and share their knowledge with the school and the community. Thus, the Unbroken Campaign was born. As a result of the success of our school-wide campaign, Westwood was chosen, as you've heard, as one of the schools to host the Globalize Thirteen Launch Event. And the students were already dreaming of the impact they could make with their newfound knowledge, so it's a good thing we had the resources at Westwood to help make their dreams a reality. Our driving question was, how can we help to globalize the spirit of the Thirteenth Amendment? And the possibilities for products were endless due to the amazing amount of technology at Westwood. We were able to connect with experts via Skype and our new video conferencing equipment. Students have access to amazing resources such as professional-grade video cameras, software such as Final Cut, iMovie, WeVideo, and even green-screen technologies. The abolitionists of the eighteen hundreds would be amazed in the resources we have here at Westwood. When Mr. Morris and Mr. Benz toured the school, they were in awe of our capabilities, stating that Westwood was the most technologically advanced school they had ever visited. Our students can create cutting-edge projects. If they dream it, they can create it. But all these resources are of no consequence if we don't have the knowledge to use them. Let me assure you that when this began, I could only use a small portion of all the tools we had available to us. But just as a savvy four-year-old teaches his parents how to use a new app, my students taught me a thing or two or three about some of these programs that we could use. And I consider myself so blessed to work at a school that I call my school family. We have a faculty that's willing to assist other teachers as well as students that might not even be in their classes. Teachers extended their time and resources to students working on this project. Lynn Washington, in charge of the Convergence Media Program, took the time to mentor and advise students with their video projects and interviews. Don Paradise, the digital art and technology teacher, extended his supplies, high-tech tools, and time to help students in and outside of his classes make their dream a reality. Our librarians helped find resources for students and helped them create professional-grade posters. Bill Hicks in the art department provided supplies, space, and guidance for students that wanted to use their artistic talents. Lord knows, I couldn't advise them. I can't even draw a stick person. These are just a few of the many examples of Westwood teachers using their talents and resources to support students regardless of whether they were involved in their program or not. This was truly a collaborative effort. Another component that contributed to the success of the campaign is the support I received from administration. In my eighteen years in the classroom, I have worked under eight different principals in two states, and I'm sad to say that I don't think this project would have been a success had I worked under anyone other than Ralph Schmidt. Since our school opened, Mr. Schmidt has always encouraged us to think outside of the box and to take risks. He assured us that we may have to fail to grow and that we wouldn't be penalized for not producing perfection on the first try. This kind of environment encouraged me to think big, which in turn encouraged our students to do the same. And it isn't just Mr. Schmidt. All of our administration and a third of our faculty attended the three-day Buck Institute Summer Training on Project-Based Learning offered this summer. The administration understands the tenants of project-based learning and they support our efforts in the classroom. Not only did administrators at Westwood provide support, but Libby Roof and Shelley Kragshaber assisted with Public Relations and helped us to send invitations to almost forty lawmakers in South Carolina, including members of our Richland City Council. We were thrilled that Councilman Manning attended our launch event and has since started the Human Trafficking Coalition for Richland County, graciously including Westwood on this team. I want to personally thank you, Councilman Manning, for being a part of my students' real-world education, and we're looking forward to attending the Human Trafficking Prevention Month Press Conference tomorrow morning. Students are thrilled to witness how their work has made a difference in the community. We will continue the initiative in the coming semester of this year and next fall until our culminating event in December, which will mark the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Thirteenth Amendment. Keep your eyes peeled for an invitation in the fall. In the meantime, please help us raise awareness of human trafficking by wearing the T-shirts that are in your red bag. They were designed by Westwood senior Alyssa Castelluccio in the Digital Arts and Design Program. Also, another of the little projects is a list of nonprofit organizations for human trafficking resources by another student. And then our WIP Human Trafficking bracelets made by our Westwood Helps With International Problems Club. Blue is the color for human trafficking, and obviously, January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, so when you're working out or, you know, going to the mall, put your T-shirt on, and you really help support our cause. Thank you so much for your time and all of your support.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the Board? Excellent presentation. Excellent presentation.
Dr. Hamm, can we put that video up on our front webpage? This is a student did. And make that one of the rolling, scrolling items. Thank you.
Love that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our voting on our Executive Session items. The Chair will entertain a motion on student appeals.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Plank.
I will make a motion that we address items, our students, one through sixteen, pull out number seventeen. With the following: Number one, refer Blythewood Academy with LARA. Number two, homeschool with strict probation. Number three, refer to the IUP team at Blythewood Academy. Four, Blythewood Academy. Five, home with strict probation, homeschool with strict probation. Six, homeschool with strict probation. Seven, Blythewood Academy. Eight, Blythewood Academy with LARA. Nine, refer to the IUP team at Blythewood Academy. Ten, Blythewood Academy. Eleven, Blythewood Academy. Twelve, deny the appeal. Thirteen, Blythewood Academy. Fourteen, Blythewood Academy with LARA. Fifteen, homeschool with strict probation. And sixteen, remain at Blythewood Academy with LARA.
You heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion on student number seventeen.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Plank.
Make a motion that on student seventeen, homeschool with strict probation and community service.
Second.
Then moved by Mr. Plank and second by Ms. Brill. Student returned to homeschool with strict probation and community service. Any further discussion? Motion fails four-three. Chair will entertain a new motion on student number seventeen.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Caution Parker.
I'd like to make the motion that student number seventeen be admitted to Blythewood Academy for no more than fifteen days, then be allowed to return to his homeschool.
Motion made by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Monica Elton Johnson. Motion by Dr. Caution Parker. The motion was that the student be referred to Blythewood Academy for fifteen days and then returned to homeschool. Motion passes five to two. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, under new business action requested... Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Next on our agenda is contractual matters. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the Board authorize the administration to quit claim any interest or property consisting of eleven point five-four total acres being shown as Richland County TMS number R-16910-02-01 to Douglas Jackson Creek LLC. According to title work on this piece of property, the district has ownership to a drainage ditch on the rear of the property line. It is in the best interest of the district to remise, release, and forever quitclaim interest of this property to grantee. The drainage ditch is located near the intersection of Brookfield Road and Decker Boulevard and across the street from Richland Northeast High School.
Motion made by Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, under new business action requested, local course approval. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Because of, well, there is a state requirement that we get the approval of the Board annually for courses that are local courses, specialized courses that we provide for our magnet programs to enrich our programs in various areas where we want to offer specialized program to meet our students' needs and interests. And you approved some of those on the consent agenda. Those were the ones that had been previously approved by the Board. Nancy Gregory is here to answer any questions and to present the three remaining courses that need your approval that are new approvals that we're requesting.
Good evening. Dr. Hamm did a great job of explaining local Board-approved courses or courses that are not in the state. not in the state's activity guide or code book. And again, these are only for elective credits. We use these to help allow our schools' flexibility to best meet the needs of our students and schools. And as Dr. Hamm said, this is just a formality that we were required by the state for you to vote on these, and we have three tonight for your approval.
Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Dr. Johnson.
As I was going through the courses, I noticed we still have study hall, and I just want to know from the high school principals or from someone from the district office if you can talk more about the study hall, because I noticed when I worked at the high school level, we had a lot of freshmen and sophomores in the study hall, and there's no credit. So what are we going to do to accommodate those students to make sure that they're ready for graduation and not place them in a study hall?
Question.
Just from all the high schools here.
If they would come up to the mic, please, and share with... Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for that question. Principals, if you would come to the mic, please. Should I call on you?
We have the principals here. Can I hear from the principals and not the assistant principal?
Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Your question is about study halls?
Yes.
Students have different schedules, different classes on their schedules. Some students have study halls based on that if they're, can't get all the classes on their schedules. It's not a desire to have study halls for our students, so we're looking at the schedules and the classes that they have and trying to match that up. Typically, you don't have a lot of freshmen who have study halls, but you have some depending on their schedule. If you don't have everything that kind of meets up with their schedule, then they may need to have a study hall. But that's not something that we push or promote. But students will still be able to graduate. They need twenty-four credits to graduate high school, and many can get, you know, five, six, seven, eight a year and have what they need definitely before their senior year to graduate.
I have one other question.
Certainly.
And this will be for both principals. Are we making contact with parents to make them aware that students are sitting in a class for those sixty minutes or ninety minutes and not receiving credit?
We are. I think one of the things we do pretty good, I think, when we're meeting with parents at the beginning of the year, when kids get their schedules, we're sort of notifying, you know, at our school, I think other schools do that as well, communicating with our families with their schedules and before school starts. So when they get into the classes, if they have a desire to make a request for a new class or a new schedule, they have that option. So that communication does occur.
Yeah, and what happens is that all of our guidance counselors in the meeting process with students advising the schedules, they also invite parents and talk to parents during that time.
But we know that, but we know high school students will always share with their parents their schedule and what's going on. So I would like to talk with Dr. Hamm a little later, because it's very disappointing when I go and visit schools and I see especially freshmen and sophomore city in a study hall class and not receiving credit. So I'll talk with Dr. Hamm, but thank you for sharing that.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to kind of follow up. I appreciate you saying that, because I actually saw that we have study hall as well. How many students choose to take study hall in order to actually, you know, make the most out of that time to get homework done or actually study? I think it tends to be more of a social time from what I've seen.
Well, yeah, some of our students, as was mentioned, take some virtual classes, but there are students who take, they have a full course, course load, also engaged in activities, athletics. So some of them will request the study hall. You know, we try to honor that. Some of them are taking virtual classes. I don't have the numbers in front of you. I can get that to you as far as a request. But let's say you have a student who has a schedule in front of them, and it's August, and they do not want to have a study hall. We try our best to work with them, how to get them in a brick and mortar class that's not a study hall, or give them a virtual class.
I think I would much rather see that time be used for students who aren't requesting it. I know we, I saw that we had community services and opportunity. I mean, that seems like a way that students could really have a much greater benefit if they're not specifically trying to use that time to really benefit themselves with either virtual classes or otherwise. And I challenge our guidance counselors and the district to really try to use some of those other opportunities rather than study hall to fill gaps in schedules would be my preference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Other comments or questions on the board?
Any other questions? And this is for action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion on the three courses for approval.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Mrs. Brill. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Any further discussion? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next, under new business, no action requested, an update on the Ridgeview High School facilities. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the monthly update on the progress that's being made with the Ridgeview facilities, and Jack Carter and Dr. Brendan Matt Foxworth are here.
If I could just go to my next slide. I guess I could go to my next slide. I guess a real big change since last time is we did take the bids for the field lighting. We only had one bidder, but fortunately that one bidder came in with a really good bid, and it was within our budget. They are in the process of ordering materials. The homeowners association is scheduled to meet at Ridgeview on the twentieth, and the principal and I will be there to answer any questions and hopefully deal with any concerns they have. We did start the work on the field. Unfortunately, the rains came over the holidays, and we basically lost the entire two-week holiday period. And the good news is, if you look at those pictures, all of that's gone now. Almost that entire field is now covered with stone. The storm drainage system that's, will be new, is already in the ground. They still anticipate they will finish on time. I would like for it to stop raining.
Yeah.
For a lot of reasons. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our proposed general fund budget timeline. Dr. Hamm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is hard to believe it's already time to begin thinking about a budget for the fifteen, sixteen school year, but it is. And Dr. Miley is here to present an overview of the budget timeline.
Thank you. You all have this in your packet, and we discussed this in our briefing last week. In front of you is the outline, is the timeline for our budget. We reviewed this with you. We reviewed it internally, and of course, still, we have a typo on it. There's the January twelfth budget request form sent to departments. It's supposed to be tomorrow after we have this, after we review this and go over this with you, but it's still a typo. So that's our outline. We, as you know, we started now. We'll be soliciting, we've already solicited your priorities. We'll get priorities from the administration. We'll survey the employees, get public input, as you know, and then we'll proceed with putting drafts together for your review. Obviously, this is well before the legislature has taken any action, which dictates a great deal of our budget, but we'll be in that process as we move through the legislative session. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Mrs. Brill?
Am I clear that you want our, our comments back by the twenty-third of January or the twentieth? I'm looking here, it said board workshop.
That's a proposed workshop. It's supposed to have, yes, it is. It's optional if you, if the board wants that workshop. We would have a workshop on the twentieth, but we still need your input. If we don't have that workshop, we still want your input by the twenty-third.
By the twenty-third?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
How do we advertise that public work session or that public, you know, when we get the opportunity, the public an opportunity to come? How do we advertise that?
Well, we've done it in the past. We have a public notice for the official budget process in the, which would be the first public session in April fourteenth. That would be, we put a notice in the paper. We notify the public through the notice, and we'd be taking an ad in the newspaper. We put it on our website, we put out notices like that. We were thinking that if you wanted more public input, we might have a session which is a normal board meeting in which you might want to open it up to the public for input at that time. That would be up to, at your discretion.
I'd like to see us use social media, you know, really take opportunities to get the word out there that we have that opportunity for the public to come talk to us and maybe even take advantage of some of our chambers and rotaries and other opportunities that we have with some of our partnerships to plug into the community. And I think the newspaper, while it certainly gets to a certain demographic, is kind of a, not a great way to get to a large group of folks.
I'm sure we will plan on doing that. We can talk to Ms. Ruth about that. We were, I think I just got added to the agenda at each of the business advisory council, the parents advisory council, the faculty advisory council, and the administrative council. I think I've been added to that agenda for all those meetings to talk about our budget process for all those groups that we just done this week. Sorry. So we're planning that.
Thank you. And I'll be sure to send you my priority item of foreign language for our elementary school students.
We have that on file if you want to send it email.
You could just say same as last.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments from the board? As Dr. Miley knows, I've requested that we put forth a special effort this time to make sure that we not just get the public's response to the budget, but we get the public's expressed interest in things that should be considered as we develop the budget. And he has agreed to do everything within his power to make sure that we create that opportunity for our public on the front end of this process this year in a proactive way as opposed to being reacted to a document that's already been produced by us. So thank you very much for that consideration, Dr. Miley. Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our agenda items for our January twenty-seventh board meeting. Is that going to be here at Polo or is that at Conner?
It's at Windsor.
It's Windsor.
It's at Windsor. Our January...
Dr. Hamm?
Yes, our January twenty-seventh meeting will be at Windsor Elementary. We'll begin with a four-thirty meeting, with a four-thirty board appreciation dinner. We do appreciate what you do. We'll have student focus that night, approval of the board budget priorities that emerged from the information provided to Dr. Miley, the proposal for the eight percent funding for capital improvements, report on our second quarter financial statement, and then we're proposing two updates on our district priorities. The first report on leadership management and the supervision task force work, and a second one on the work that's forthcoming on positioning and marketing, Richland Two.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Are there any other items the board would like to add to the January twenty-seventh board meeting or a future board agenda?
Mr. Chair, I have an item...
Dr. Johnson.
Yes, I would like to add an item R-two-I-two. If we can just talk more about the courses that we're going to be considering, because as a former K teacher, I think it's so important that we add those items to make sure that we accommodate not some students, but all of our students in our school district, because as board members, we do represent all of the population, all of the students here. So if we can just talk about some courses, especially K courses, so we can make sure that our students are career-ready, the ones that don't plan to enter the military or college.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Other items for future board meetings?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I just challenged, I know I didn't put a timeline on it, but the report that I requested for our schools that have dropped in ratings, I really would like that to not go too far out, because obviously, you know, I need, I want to make sure we have plans in place. I'm sure you're doing that, but just to get the board updated on where that's going.
We should be able to do that first board meeting in February. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other items to be added? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our second public participation session. We have no one who's signed up. However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the board, you can feel free to do so at this time. Thank you very much. Finally, on our agenda is our board superintendent comments. We'll start with Dr. Caution Parker.
Thank you. First, I'd just like to say thank you for all of the informative presentations this evening. They were great, especially the faculty focus on human trafficking. That was just outstanding. Job well done. And just on a personal note, a Happy New Year to everyone, and I'm glad everyone's back in place and ready to go, bearing the weather. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mackey?
Thanks, as usual, for everyone who's here, who takes the time to come to these meetings and sit through them and participate. Globalize thirteen, awesome. Westwood, that was a powerful, sobering presentation. Thank you for that. And on another note, I want to say thank you for our teachers, our parents, our students, our community members who communicate with us, whether you send, you place phone calls or send emails. We do what we think is best, but we've got a pretty much a PhD in our perspectives and our vantage point and the viewpoints that we hear, but our perspectives are about as diverse as our fingerprints. So please continue sending emails, continue calling when you, when you express to us your opinions, whether we agree with them or not. It's so appreciative. It wasn't very long that I was on the side of this table. I keep reiterating that, and it meant a lot to me to be able to express my opinions or share feedback, good, bad, or whatever, and have people to respond and just, and just to listen to what I have to say. So thank you for you who take the time to do that. It means so much. It gives us a pulse as to what we're doing, and it means a whole lot. Please continue to do that. It's appreciative, and just thank you for your time and for the input that you give us. We are here to serve your needs in the community.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Mr. Manning.
Mr. Chair, I just thought it was, you know, the immediate impact of the Globalize thirteen. I was just reading quickly, updating myself on the news, and I noticed on Forest Acres, there was a child that was almost abducted at knife point. It really brings home that this is in our backyard, not just something that's international. And when I look at the age of those students, you know, my daughter, who I just got back into school again, going through the routines, is right there in that spot between that five and ten years old that we saw, that such widespread abuse, and it just really, you know, touches your heart when you think about that and what that means. So Ralph and your staff, amazing job in really turning the tides and doing something that's current. On a lighter note, Dr. Davis, I notice you're matching your shoelaces to your socks now. You have like escalated a whole nother level of trying to raise the bar on the dress around this dish, so thank you for taking us to that new level. And just welcome back to everybody in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Mrs. Brill?
On a different note, I wanted to thank our chairman. We had a tremendous amount of work to cover in a short amount of time in executive sessions. He led us masterfully, and it's really a great board. We have great camaraderie, and we seem to understand each other and share our ideas. And, you know, we don't always agree, but we have, it's really going well. So I say Happy New Year to everybody, because this is a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
I would just like to say thank you to Patrick Kelly and all of those Teachers of the Year with the Teacher Forum that we all participated in last evening at Drew High School, Richland One and Richland Two Teachers of the Year, the Teacher Forum. It was very exciting, and I think we all had a great time just talking and interacting with the other teachers and being able to address those questions and concerns that you guys have as teachers and as educators. So thank you and kudos to Patrick Kelly and his team that put that together for us.
Mr. Plank?
Well, first, Happy New Year. And it's interesting, as I've, as people, more people know that I'm on the board, it's kind of funny how people address, address me by saying, "So how's it going?" with this sense that it's just terrible. Well, you know, I'm telling people I love it, and it's exciting, and it's really neat to be a part of this group. And as it relates to last night being at that event, I too took something away from that. In addition to the comments of the teachers and educators, it was so important. Patrick Kelly had quoted Steve Prefontaine, an elite runner who died prematurely, but, and this quote, I believe the track team at Blithwood High School has it on their shirts, and the quote says, "To give anything less than the best is to sacrifice the gift." And I've tweaked it a little bit by thinking about it myself and by saying, "To give anything less than my best or your best is to sacrifice your gift." And this room in this district is filled, is filled with people with tremendous gifts. And as I think about how heavy my heart became listening to and watching that video again about the Globalize thirteen, the human trafficking issue, which has obviously become a county issue, a state issue, and a national, worldwide issue, you know, it's sad to see those numbers. They're staggering. And so what a neat educational experience it was for the kids and those in...
And so what a neat educational experience it was for the kids and those involved, but what a great public awareness effort it has become. And it's, it's exciting to know that tomorrow with the press release, we'll bring more awareness to this modern-day slavery and that it is in our, in our communities. And finally, on that, on that slide, I saw, how can you help the fight? How can you help the fight? And it goes back to that quote, and that's just to give your best and use your gifts wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. Dr. Ham?
Yes, sir. Dr. Elkins Johnson commended the teachers for their participation in the pastries and policies. And if you were there, it was like speed dating on policy issues with policymakers. It was really a remarkable opportunity to communicate about issues that were really of importance to our classroom teachers. But I want to commend our board. Every board member was there, and I think that really communicated to our teachers, and they sincerely appreciated the support that they got from this board. So hats off to all of you for your attendance at that meeting, especially because you had that meeting, you have this meeting, you have another one tomorrow night. It is a busy week for all of you, so thank you. I want to congratulate Blythewood High School School Improvement Council. It is a finalist for the Dick and Tonkey Riley Award. It's an honor roll SIC, and we're going to wish them the very best. Hopefully, they will be the recipients of that award. And we've got a number of schools that have been in this position or have received that award, so our school improvement council should have a shout out to all of them as well in the work that they do. Keel's Beta Club was named a National Beta School of Distinction. We're proud of them. And last but not least, I want to mention Summit Parkway Middle School, that won this year's QuizWiz competition, which is a quiz bowl that we run on R two TV. They did a great job.
Thank you, Dr. Ham.
I just want citizens of Richland School District Two to, to know that you have elected a very, very strong and committed, dedicated board. The members of this board are working as closely together as any board I've been on for some time to address the issues that are most important to our students, our teachers, and the families of Richland School District Two. Thank you for your support and for your willingness to entrust your children into our care, and we commit ourselves to doing our very best to make sure that the time that they spend with, with us in local parenthesis is in fact that, as we take the place and try to serve the role of you as parents. Thank you for your confidence and your commitment to the education of your children and our commitment to educating your children. I want to thank this board for the tremendous level of cooperation at its pretty core teamwork that is being expressed and demonstrated in very tangible ways each and every time we come together. And it is very clear to me that we all have a single focus, and that is to do the very best that we can for all of the students in Richland School District Two. So thank you, fellow board members, for your tremendous support and cooperation.
Chair will entertain a motion at this time to adjourn.
Moved.
Seconded.
By Ms. Manning, seconded by Mrs. Brill. No further discussions. Means adjourn. Have a good night.
Thank you.